Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge Allegiance? Remain standing for the invocation.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for our great city and our leadership and our residents. God in a world that's so chaotic, we just thank you that you are with us, that you are here. And God, I say a special prayer for all of our elected officials, our leadership, past and present. And God, a special prayer over our new police chief for the great city of Canton. And God, we just lift you up and we give you praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to call to order our April 4th, 2024 council meeting. We'll begin tonight with a consideration of approved tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, revisions? I believe we do need an executive session for real estate and litigation. Any other changes or motions?
Motion to approve as amended. Second.
Motion, a second. All the papers say aye. Post nay. All members voted for the motion. We have a few guests and visitors this evening. First of all, it's my pleasure and honor to introduce our new chief police, Marty Farrell. The chief is here. Would you please stand, say hello, and we want to welcome you to our city. We're excited to have you here. I had the honor of swearing in Chief Farrell last week, and we're just, it's a privilege to have you on our team. We will have a formal reception for the chief and some other new employees at our April 18th meeting at 5:00 p.m. preceding that. And we'll have the public spend some time with you at that time to get to know you better. And sure, they're gonna, gonna love you as much as we do. So we were happy to have you here, so welcome aboard and look forward to your service. Also have a couple of proclamations to present this evening. And I'll begin with the first one. City of Canton proclamation number 2024-04041, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are critical to Canton's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, while children are our most valuable resource, they also are most vulnerable. Children have a right to be safe and an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow in an environment that fosters healthy development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Canton's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment and providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas effectively intervening in the lives of children threatened by abuse in a shared responsibility, and Canton's citizens must come together so the voices of our children are heard by all. We all must ensure that our communities are extending helping hands to children and families in need. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas by providing a safe and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Canton's children will grow to their full potential and the next generation of leaders helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore, I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Canton, Georgia, and urge families and communities to become involved in protecting our community's children. It now is my honor to present the proclamation down at the podium to Ms. Michelle Meek with the Children's Haven and Haley Gonye from DFAX. Would you join me then? I want to special thanks to Michelle and the Children's Haven and Department of Family Children's Services for all you do for our children and the community. So thank you again. One other proclamation. It's always a little odd that these always come on the same month, the same night, but this is a proclamation for Safe Digging Month. Whereas thousands of each times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. Whereas the Cherokee County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stetcolored-driven organization dedicated to prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the national 811 notification system in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of the city of Canton can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim on behalf of the city of Canton, the month of April 2024, as Safe Digging Month, encourage contractors and homeowners throughout the city of Canton to always call 811 before digging. And I would ask Mr. Joe Ordway with AT&amp;T to join me at the podium. Okay, now that I've had my exercise, we'll proceed. We're honored tonight to have a presentation of the City of Canton Sustainability Plan and updates on city projects. And we want to welcome Ms. Jen Miller with Schneider Electric to give us an update. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to see you all again. I know that there are a few new faces here that I have not met before, but I've spent many nights here in this room working with you all. And we're excited to be here tonight to give you an update on the project and the progress here. And then also talk about the sustainability plan that I know that you all have received a copy of, and Kelly has worked with you guys. So we're gonna start with just a project recap first. We'll kind of introduce our core team here, give you an overview of what this project was. We know there are some new members of council, so wanted to kind of refresh on what the goals of this project was and then talk about the updates on what, what we've done so far and what kind of is to come. So first, wanted to introduce the core project team. Tonight with me, I have Philip Dobson, who is our project manager, and Marissa Joseph, who is a regional client coordinator. So Philip obviously is managing kind of the day-to-day of this project. And Marissa supports our clients in the backend of projects. So we all wanted to be here tonight to share this update. So the first thing that we did want to do is kind of step back and just remind you all of what, why the city kind of chose to go down this path to begin with. When we started working with the city, y'all's critical, two of your most critical facilities, City Hall and the Public Safety Complex, were really kind of at a critical point in terms of their maintenance and just the status. I remember every night we were in this room, it was middle of summer and about as hot as it was outside. So the goal was to update the HVAC, the envelope, all of the critical pieces that keep these beautiful historic buildings comfortable and usable. But to do that in a way that promoted your sustainability goals and really maximized the use of public funds. So these were kind of the guiding principles of this project. This is just a scope overview here. It's got a lot of detail. Bottom line was, the two biggest focuses, like we said, were City Hall and public safety. Doing these renovation projects while these buildings remained occupied was key because these are kind of the hubs of your city operations. But on top of that, looking at opportunities like expanding your solar footprint. We're gonna have solar on the roof of City Hall here, and there will be days where City Hall is entirely powered by solar, which is exciting for a 100-year-old building. And then looking at additional areas that we could support, tools, technology, just ways that we can make the city even more efficient. So over the course of our 20-year partnership, this project will drive $2 million in savings for the city. And on top of that, projected to get around $220,000 in rebates and tax incentives based on the work that we're doing. So just a quick reminder on what this project is. And as you can see, this is just another kind of display of that financial impact. Over the course of that 20 years, the city would have spent $6.2 million on the utility usage in the buildings that we're impacting. We're dropping that significantly with this project. So you can really see the use of this capital investment is really a strategic one. And I think that was kind of a big driving factor for the council at the time. So now, that's kind of the, the big snapshot of the project, but Marissa's gonna talk about the work that we've kind of completed so far.
Hi there. So if you look at the pictures shown, so this shows the cool roof replacement. So your previous roof was out of warranty pretty much at the end of its useful life. And we are going up on the roof to replace mechanical units, implement that solar that Jen spoke about. So it was just the ideal time to really replace that roof with something that's more energy-efficient and has longevity. So if you see here, you'll see the before and afters and what it looks like now that that roof scope has been completed. Next is the solar-covered picnic table at Heritage Park. This is right next to that wonderful new playground that y'all just put in that is so great. And so this is a great opportunity for a busy parent, they charge their phone while their kid plays, you know, anything like that. This will also have custom Canton signage. We're working to finalize that signage, but there will be custom signage put on this picnic table as well to show the community what the city is doing to give back. Also coming soon is a solar tree in Etowah River Park. So this will also have that custom Canton signage as well. And we've gotten word from the warehouse, it's ready to ship, it's ready to be here. We're just making sure that the site is ready for implementation, but coming shortly, which will be another wonderful attraction and eyepiece too throughout the community for the solar initiative that the city is taking. Also, the interactive kiosk, we've been working closely with Kelly and Lauren to help design this, this kiosk and have also used the work of local artists. So this will be right here in City Hall and will showcase live data from the solar panels on the roof. It will also be updated continuously with updates from the Canton website, social media. So this should be very up to date and have information that the city wants to share out with the community readily accessible. And then finally, these placard displays, these are static displays that will be here in City Hall as well showcasing the Canton of yesterday, Canton of today, and Canton of tomorrow. And these will also be interchangeable, so when you do have new information to update, we will keep those up to date as well. But just another great resource for the community to learn more about the city. Philip's going to talk more about the timeline and what's to come.
20-year warranty, material and labor on that new roof, by the way. So what you got here is sort of a condensed, one-page view of the construction schedule that shows all of the scopes that we're doing, obvious, obviously not in detail. There's a lot that goes into all of these, but looking at this, you can see the timeline for each of those scopes and how we're gonna progress mainly through the rest of this year, leading up into the beginning part of next year. So, you know, middle of the year there, just about everything gets going. As you saw, we've completed the roof. What wasn't shown there, which is, in my opinion, one of the most important things we're doing is the HVAC renovations here at City Hall and at Public Safety. Those are currently ongoing, particularly here. We've been working here at City Hall for the past month or so to get ready to actually replace the units, which is coming imminently. In the next month, we're going to start replacing units. Over at Public Safety, we've, we've done a little bit of prep work over there, moving some equipment, trying to get ahead of the game over there. But towards the end of May, we're gonna be mobilizing over there to actually start replacing equipment there as well. That's gonna be a challenge. There's gonna be a lot of coordination that needs to go into that scope. You know, it's a live building. We need to maintain comfort and be mindful of the fact that people are working while we're working. So we'll be having a lot of meetings with Nathan and the rest of the, the team to discuss how that work's gonna proceed. Aside from the mechanical renovations, the solar project, there's really three pieces to it. The picnic table, which you saw, the solar lift tree, which you saw, and the array that's going here at City Hall. All of those are going to be, over the next two months, completed. Or at least, we'll be working on the one here at City Hall. Lift tree should be completed in May. So that'll be a really cool thing. We're gonna do some time-lapse video of the erection of that solar lift tree. It's gonna be a really cool centerpiece for the city, I think. I gotta be careful about turning this into a construction update meeting. There's a lot.
Appreciate that.
So the rest of the scopes on there, while very important or a little bit farther out, a little bit smaller in scope compared to solar and mechanical, so that's gonna be the team's focus over the next few months, is really driving the mechanical and solar work to completion and getting ready to address some of these other scopes as well.
Alright. Thank you. Is, oh, and I guess there was another slide. But basically, we plan to check back in with you guys on a regular basis as we kind of have major milestones. The next will be, I think we were targeting around August. And so, yeah, we look forward to keeping you guys updated, but if you have any questions, I'll also be presenting the sustainability plan, but is there any questions on the project or any comments on the, the progress?
Thank you for the progress report. We're excited to hear all the advancement and look forward to hopefully a little cooler summer in, in the council chambers and, in many ways. But Mr. Johnson, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you for that update. I, I love that you mentioned the 20-year warranty on the roof and the labor. In regards to that timeline, is there any, I guess, flex time built into that for delays or is that, we expecting that to be what it's gonna be?
So there is a little bit of flex time built into that. We, we always account for, you know, a little bit of delay, weather, you know, unforeseen. There's a little bit of time in there. All things go perfectly, no issues, no delays. There's a good chance we're done with solar and mechanical in the fall.
Awesome. Thank you.
You have other questions on those updates?
So, thank you guys. So the next item is the Sustainability Plan Overview. And this was another element of our project. It was not just the construction side of things, but also looking at the city's sustainability plan and vision. So just at a high level, the city had already done a ton to promote sustainability. It's kind of ingrained in the culture of your staff here. So one of the biggest goals was just to really capture the progress that y'all had already made and then identify really specific key goals and tasks that staff could progress strategically moving forward. So in order for us to develop this plan, we first developed a vision, then really, yeah, captured the progress, identified metrics that y'all could start to track, and then really establish the goals, tasks, and timelines. So the first step in that was kind of two-pronged. First, our team did a deep peer research, peer city research project where dove into all of the other communities that participate in Atlanta Regional Commission's Green Communities Program, along with other cities that just have established sustainability plans. And kind of compared those across, what are they doing? What, what does that look like when you compare that with the Green Communities certification? And then kind of went through that with the city to figure out, like, which city do you wanna model yourself after? What, what fits here with Canton? But it was, it was not a take a prepackaged sustainability solution and flop it on Canton. This was very customized. The second area was stakeholder, stakeholder engagement. I know many of council at the time got surveys to fill out. We also had those surveys go to different key department members and then did really interactive ideation sessions and one-on-one interviews just to really make this a Canton-specific plan driven by your unique goals here. So the goal here was to create not an overwhelming 100-page sustainability plan that no citizen would ever necessarily dig through page by page, except for maybe a handful. The plan was to create something that people could easily digest, that could really be progressed on and tracked over time and then be, you know, updated as, as you start to make progress and move forward. So, you know, I've, we have, I think you've all received this plan, and it's, I think, about 15, 16 pages. I've just pulled out some key elements to kind of talk about. There are four sections in that plan. We have the, you know, general purpose and vision statement. We talk about the current state here in Canton, the solutions for tomorrow, and then kind of what the plan is for the future. And so this picture on the right is just one example of that current state section. And this is the land use and green space. You'll see that there are five different categories in each section. Those were kind of identified based on what the ARC Green Communities recommends with their certification process. That's energy in buildings, land use in green space, water and waste management, transportation, education, and community. So this is just one example of that. You can see how much Canton has accomplished in this space just by even glancing at it. But I'm sure as you all have gone through, I mean, it's impressive what your staff has already done. Then there's performance metrics. These were things that we identified, these would be helpful to track. But we need to continue to strategize on the best way to track those things because you, there are all kinds of methods you can take to tracking your performance when it comes to sustainability. And that requires a deeper level of investment, that the city just needs to evaluate which, which elements are worth tracking. But we've kind of identified some of those now. And then this is just an overview of those key goals. You can see there's anywhere from three to five goals per those five categories. And for each of those goals, you can see there's, I think typically about three to four specific tasks that staff has decided, hey, we are going to, you know, this is how we are gonna advance that goal strategically. And here's the timeline that we're gonna do it in. So for example, this was a goal around increasing pollinators on city property. There are those three tasks set out. It's the sustainability department's responsibility. And this is, you know, the goal is to complete that by Q3 of this year. So I know this is kind of a broad overview. We know y'all had a lot of time to review this plan. We wanted to just kind of present the process that we took to get it, the structure of the plan, and then really open up to any discussion or feedback, I believe. The, Kelly is gonna seek adoption of this plan at, is it the next council meeting? The next council meeting. So, yeah, is there any, any discussion or questions?
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Appreciate the work and certainly appreciate the work. Ms. Benly and our Sustainability Advisory Board have done in this area and own this plan and exciting. And we look forward to adopting it and moving forward. Any other, any questions for Ms. Miller tonight? Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, we have one more presentation this evening, and that's a presentation and discussion of TBG Residential Project to include approval and support letter for Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, GIC, and proposed loan. Sarah Buckner and Anna Marie Fulbright with TBG Residential join us tonight. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Most of you are familiar faces, but for those whom we've not met, I'm Sarah Buckner and this is Anna Marie Fulbright, and we're with TBG Residential. TBG Residential is an affordable housing developer based here in Atlanta. We have been in business since 1918, specializing in li-tech development for the past 20 years. But I have over 40 years of real estate management and development experience. We are vertically integrated. So what that means is TBG is the development company, we're the construction company, and we're the management company. So that means we're not bringing in any third parties into these developments as well. We're the long-term owners of these communities. Right now, kind of our pipeline, our experience, we have 21 communities placed in service throughout Georgia, Alabama, and Tennessee, and four under construction. So by 2025, we'll have around 2,000 units of affordable housing throughout the town. Here are just some examples of the communities that we have placed in service. It's a typical kind of garden-style build, three to four stories. Okay. And so, and if those went by too fast, I can always go back. But I'm gonna let Anna Marie talk a little bit more about project specifics.
So getting into more of the development, we're calling this summit at Hickory Creek. It's located at Bluffs Parkway and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. So we're here to seek a letter of GIC support, of which the city of Canton is a part of that program. So we would like to submit a letter of support with our application to DCA for tax credits as well as a potential loan of $500,000 in support of development. So here's our conceptual site plan. This is a master plan. So here's our conceptual site plan. This is a master plan, so hopefully, we hope to build two phases of this development. But tonight, we are just focused on Phase One with this application. So this is a conceptual elevation of potentially what the building could look like. You know, we are aware of the fifty percent brick requirement, so we'll make sure to meet all those guidelines with the design. So these are some details about the project, as I mentioned, off of Bluffs Parkway. So Phase One and Phase Two will each be about sixteen acres each. A little over the whole site is thirty-two acres. Phase One will be a four-story building comprising of ninety-six units, and it's seniors, so ages sixty-five and older. And this was originally entitled, it received a master plan amendment and conditional use permit for up to two hundred and fifty-one units in a five-story building. So we are, if we have the opportunity to build Phase One and Phase Two, it'll be a hundred and ninety-two units in two four-story buildings. So amenities on Phase One include a fitness room, computer room, and community room. There'll be a mix of A M I levels, income levels, so it'll have fifty percent, sixty percent, and eighty percent. This is the range of what the rents will be, eight seventy-five to fourteen fifty for a one-bedroom, a thousand and fifty-three to seventeen forty-three for a two-bedroom, a mix of one and two-bedroom units. And then Phase Two would ultimately be the same, ninety-six units. So as I mentioned, we're here to seek a letter of G I C support from the City of Canton. These are just some examples of G I C communities that we have worked with in the past. We received, um, a letter for support from them, received their points, as well as the tax credit award from D C A. So we've worked with Hawkinsville, Warrington, and Douglasville. So as a part of this development, there's the opportunity for a potential recreational easement with the city. Approximately eight acres of the site, approximately half of it is not needed for our development. So preliminary conversations, you know, it could be used for walking trails, hiking trails, something for the high school, which is just adjacent, and, you know, just a benefit of no future residential development portion of the site. So we're seeking a five hundred thousand dollar loan. The purpose of this really is to fill gaps in our budget. As you know, interest rates and construction costs are just stubbornly high, so these deals are kind of a blur. So we're flexible in how that can be structured. It will be, would be construction and permanent financing, up to fifteen-year permanent loan term, which would be concurrent with our first mortgage. It could be structured through a local government agency, potentially the Canton Housing Authority. And these are just some examples of loans that we do have with cities, mainly through home funds that they have been allocated. So we, you know, haven't defaulted on any of these loans. We have great working relationships with these cities, Alabama, um, on these loans. So we thank you for your time. We're excited about this development, and we can take any questions.
Thank you. We appreciate the information, uh, the, the presentation. Certainly, you know, affordable senior housing, attainable housing is, is, is a top priority for the city, and I know our Housing Committee, and, uh, we were, uh, disappointed that the previous approved project that would help, um, you know, address some of these needs for affordable senior housing in the community, did back out. So we appreciate the opportunity to, to, to help us work on this, these solutions for, for seniors in need. I know with, with the loan request, as you mentioned, would probably go through our Canton Housing Authority. I'm gonna ask our city manager to get with Canton Housing Authority, just to kind of discuss, you know, interests and opportunities there, what would be needed there, and, and look at the, the other cities I know you've had these arrangements with. And I'd ask council if you have any questions specific, you know, to this project, to, to please forward those to our city manager or, or Mr. Patton, so we could look at this in detail and consider our options and our, of course, provider letter of support. We do support the project and, uh, try to get, uh, answer as soon as possible, so. Any specific questions, uh, tonight? Mr. Yon?
I had one. Uh, you mentioned Hawkinsville. Was that the renovation of the old hospital downtown?
It was, so it was.
Yeah, I drive past that a couple of times a year, and it, they did a beautiful job on that building, 'cause that hospital was in sad condition.
It was a labor of love for our construction team. I'm not sure how many more historic adaptive reuses are in our future, but it, it turned out beautifully, and we're lucky to work with the city on it.
Thank you. Good to know. Mr. Johnson?
So I'm looking at the cost of the one-bedroom and a two-bedroom, and thanks for meeting with us a few months ago. Uh, I guess I'm just trying to imagine a scenario for a senior. A one-bedroom up to fourteen fifty, a two-bedroom up to seventeen forty-three. Can you just give, I guess for the record, you mentioned the fifty, sixteen, eighty percent, so that cost is supplemented. Well, I guess my question is, is that cost supplemented, and if so, how, or is the resident responsible for that entire amount?
No, the resident's responsible for that entire amount, and it's based on income limits that are set by Cherokee County, and then there's a calculation that goes into those income limits to set the rents.
Those are the maximum rents that we're allowed to charge. That doesn't mean that those are, that's, I mean, that's the max, but it, that also dictates what market might show us, might show us that it needs to be, you know, three hundred dollars lower, something like that. So that kind of will be telling too. But those are the maximum rent limits that we could charge for each one of those A M Is that we had previously talked about.
Okay. No, and, and thank you for explaining, and that's kind of just what I was getting at. I'm just imagining a senior on a fixed income, seventeen hundred dollars is a lot of money, even though it's, you know, a different day and time, but, uh, thanks for that clarification.
And any other questions you guys may have as it comes up in regards to A M Is and things like that, feel free to email us. I know most of you guys have our email, um, but kind of as those questions come up, we're, we're an open book and transparent, and we're happy to talk more and explain more.
Certainly, and we, we all know Mr. Patton can assist with those answers as well, so.
Yes.
I have one question.
Mr. Tolan?
Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate that you all are at the table. I noticed that at Taylor Village, Logan Park, and Hazel Park, the maximum number of units is ninety. I think that's at Hazel. You all are proposing ninety-six with a potential second phase. Given that, you know, the three li-tech properties are in this, you know, the sixty to ninety range, what do, what do you think the likelihood, uh, and I, I think I know what your answer is gonna be, and any, um, barriers that might prohibit the Phase Two, the other ninety-six units coming on?
Well, we're hopeful. I mean, we're approaching this, um, as that we are gonna actively be pursuing a Phase Two. A lot of it, to put it blank, you know, it comes down to competition in the area. So, you know, with the Housing Authority, we're just, and then next year, that's competition for us. However, that being said, we're in it for the long haul. It kind of plays into, that plays into it a little bit, of, you know, G I C points, limited resources, things like that. So that's affects our deal.
Okay, and then a follow-up, um, regarding points, would the G I C letter also impact Phase Two?
No, it would, it, it, this is just for Phase One, it's just for this year, so it's, makes no promise for Phase Two or next year or anything like that.
But if, if there is a, a, a serious interest in Phase Two, it's likely you would come back for another G I C letter?
We would come back, yes.
Okay.
But, but to be clear, that is not me saying we would not come back and, and apply to D C A if we didn't have the G I C support or anything like that, but would we ask for it? Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. McGree?
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, just for the record. I believe we discussed them in our talk, but would you talk to us about how the property would be managed and kept up?
Absolutely. As I mentioned earlier, T B G has its own in-house management company. And honestly, I think that's probably one of our best-selling points as a company. We're doing everything in-house. We're not flipping it to a third-party management. Our, we've got, you know, our Senior Vice President runs our management company. We have regional managers, and then we'll have a full-time onsite property manager, and probably a part-time manager as well, as long as a maintenance person. We manage our properties. If you went to any of our communities, I would encourage you guys, or anyone in the community, to go check out one of our communities, something that's built ten years ago, or something that's built two years ago, look amazing. You know, our dumpsters are clean, our residents are cared for. I will say the, how we approach it is, it's a privilege to, to live in our communities. We pride ourselves in taking care of our communities, taking care of our residents. So something, our management company is, is wonderful. They do a really good job. And I think that when, and hopefully this, when this gets built, um, you guys and the community will be really proud of the way that it's managed.
Do you intend, um, to maintain ownership of the property?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, tell me about the age and who can live there? How many people in an apartment, and visitors and animals?
Yes, um, so it is age-restricted, so that's fifty-five years and older. The way that we manage is, if there's, you know, two residents within, you know, an apartment, both individuals have to be fifty-five and older. That's kind of the rules that we've set, the guidelines that we've set for a one-bedroom. I mean, I think that it could be up to two people per, for a one-bedroom, two individuals could live there. For a two-bedroom, I think two individuals could live there, or three? I think two. Two? Before you hold that on the record, let me get back to you on that. As far as pets go, I mean, we don't allow other, other than service dogs, animals, obviously, things of that nature, we don't allow pets out of property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you guys.
We do have one public hearing, uh, to attend to tonight before we move into our business meeting, and that's a public hearing, discussion, and possible action on a text amendment for the expansion of non-conforming parcels. Mr. Turner?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have a public hearing, the opportunity to amend, uh, one oh five, twelve, sixteen, non-conforming parcels. The way that it's written is, if you're non-conforming, you're considered buildable, you're kind of a exception to it. If you comply, but only to area width and depth, which is not a requirement we have now, if you have other issues, then you're kind of in a weird area where this wouldn't apply to you. So you're non-conforming, but you, you couldn't build through this. So what we're doing is just looking to clean that up, move that applicable area width and depth away, just to say if you were legally subdivided by the standards at the time, you're non-conforming, and you're considered buildable. The issue that brought this up, uh, was road frontage, so we don't allow lots that don't have road fronts to be buildable, but we did allow them to be divided, and there's really no avenue to which they could, they could get a variance or move forward with, uh, developing a property. If we change it a- as proposed, so that it, it allows just non-conformity, as long as it was legally divided, then that would, uh, give more flexibility for property.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. This is a public hearing, so at this point, we will open the public hearing for comments and discussion. We had no one sign up, uh, to, to speak, so we'll close the public hearing at this time and open up the council, or council. We discussed this at previous meetings, I believe also at our retreat. Are there any questions for Mr. Turner? Hearing none. Uh, this, um, is up for possible action tonight. Do we have any motions?
Sure.
Mr. Tolan?
I'd like to make a motion on the text amendment for the expansion of non-conforming parcels. Is that appropriate, Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have in your packet two sets of coun- uh, council minutes. One is from our retreat, uh, March fifteenth through the seventeenth, and one is from our, um, draft minutes for our March twenty-first meeting. Are any changes, additions, additions, or revisions to any of those minutes, or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the retreat and from our previous council meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one informational item this evening, and that's a review of the February financials. Ms. Forrester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to provide the February twenty-twenty-four financials for your review. And I wanted to also just touch on a few highlights that's occurred during the last time, last month since we've met. I am happy to report that we successfully completed the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three audit. It has been submitted to both the Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts and the Georgia Government, Georgia Finance Officers Association for review. The city's auditors will present their work at the next council meeting, so if, if you have questions, they'll be ready to answer those for you. Business occupation taxes for the current year were due March thirty-first. Code enforcement will be notified this week of businesses that have failed to renew. We received over one thousand fifty renewals, but we are still shy of our budget estimates. We need to make contact with a hundred and eighty-two businesses still. The city is in receipt of electric franchise fee payments from the four providers that service our jurisdiction. Those providers are Georgia Power, Amacola EMC, Sawni EMC, and Cobb EMC. Payments have exceeded our budget expectations by more than sixty-six thousand dollars. And the city is in receipt of our fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, which is the L A M I grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of three hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And I'll be glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Appreciate those updates. Uh, any questions for Ms. Forrester? We all know where to find you, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I have any announcements this evening? We had no one sign up for our public input, so we will move into old business with Item A, Discussion and Possible Action on Updates to Zoning Map and Other Unified Development Code Amendments. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. As you're aware, this is the culmination of over a year's worth of work on the advance. To last meeting, we went over the proposed amendments. Mr. Dyer's office has prepared the, uh, text amendment document that is being presented to you and on the agenda. Hopefully, you, it meets your expectations and what we have endeavored to accomplish. And we have not received any comments, one way or the other, in the, our office, so it's presented tonight, hopefully, for a vote and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Again, I want to thank everyone on the team that's worked so hard on these updates, and all the, uh, members of the public who have commented, uh, to various meetings and hearings. Again, just as a recap, uh, the existing residential categories were primarily, uh, remain intact, and the updates, uh, to the other categories and amendments, uh, were the ones that we discussed on, on basically other categories. Do we need to review those all, or, I mean, they're in your packet, we've discussed those several times. Mr. Dyer, anything specific you want to add to?
No, we, this is all the changes we've been talking about, absent the, our, uh, changes that were proposed. The motion could just be simply to, to adopt the ordinance that was, that is proposed.
Okay.
To make the changes.
Thank you. It keeps it simple. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Waterman?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to a, uh, approve the-
I'd like to make a motion to a, approve the updates to the zoning map as recommended.
Do you want to also include the Unified Development Code amendments?
Apologies, yes.
Okay.
Updates to the zoning map and other unified development code amendments.
So we're not, we're not doing the map tonight, are we?
That's correct. These are only the, the UDC amendments.
It's just the code amendments. We'll do the map later.
Yes, Mr. Turner, I will be working on the zoning map at a future date.
It's right there. Okay.
It is listed that way on the agenda, so.
So let's, let's start over.
Okay.
So I think the motion, Mr. Waterman, would be to adopt the ordinance to amend the text of the Unified Development Code.
Okay. Mr. Waterman?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Green. Item B, discussion and possible action on Sunnyside mural concept. Ms. Green, welcome.
Hello. As presented at your last meeting, we have the beautiful Sunnyside mural concept. This concept came about as a result of us following our public art policy that was adopted last summer. We put out a request for qualifications and we received results from 16 artists. Our Cultural Arts Commission narrowed that down to three artists who would provide us with concepts. And the Cultural Arts Commission proposed a separate committee who would review the submissions, the concepts that were submitted, and make a selection from those three concepts. So that committee was made up of people from the Cultural Arts Commission, but also from people in the Sunnyside community who could speak a little bit better as to what folks in the community might wish to see in a mural. So as you have seen, we have the concept that was completed by artist Graham Caraway. And I believe at the last meeting, it was asked that we put the image on social media for some public input. And I reviewed everything that had been posted today, and it looks like all of the feedback from the public was very positive. Lots of likes, lots of shares, lots of comments. So I feel like that's all good, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I want to thank the Cultural Arts Commission for their work on this, and also members from the community who also pitched in and reviewed the concept. Again, I want to thank Mr. Bill Kent, who's, who's providing the, the wall for, for the mural. Again, I, I've received very positive remarks and comments, and everything that I saw online was, was all very positive for, for the mural. So any questions, comments? Yes. Ms. McGree?
Ms. Green, the concept is beautiful. Thank you for your work and the commission and for the committee that worked on this. I'd like to make a motion to approve this mural.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
If you'll indulge us, if there's one more item, discussion, possible action on the Canton Theater lighting and sound upgrade.
Absolutely. Well, as discussed at your last meeting as well, following a successful RFP process, we received seven proposals for the lighting and sound upgrades. Just for a little bit of information, that scope includes work on a brand-new audio system, a new lighting system, which includes new wedge monitors, house and lobby speakers, 24 to 32-channel digital audio console with a digital snake, permanently installed sound system with four mics, a Chamsys Magic Q lighting console, nine front-of-house LED ellipsoidal lights, four overstaged floodlights, LED light bar, back wall wash, and a remote projector and screen control. So this estimate is inclusive of all of those things. Our selection committee met, reviewed all of the proposals. We interviewed four of our candidates that we felt like we would like to see a little bit more information from. And as our final recommendation, our staff selection committee selected CCS. I believe you asked a few questions at the last meeting about warranty. So the, the company that will do the installation, CCS, they offer a 90-day warranty, as well as a, part of their package includes a year of service on the items. As far as some of the bigger fixtures, the Allen & Heath Board has a one-year manufacturer warranty. The Visionary Systems products is two years plus one extension available per purchase afterwards. The audio console, or no, excuse me, the lighting console includes a two-year manufacturer warranty. Lighttronics products include five-year warranty. Countryman microphones include one-year warranty. And anything that we are doing through digital projection will include a three-year warranty and also 20,000 hours if we, if we replace those bulbs. So I believe that answered all the questions you had, but I did want to mention an exciting opportunity that we were awarded from the Fox Theater. I just found out yesterday, we are receiving a grant from the Fox Theater, the fabulous Fox Theater in Atlanta, through the Georgia Presenters Program. That's part of their, Fox Gives Initiative. And we have been selected to receive a grant from them to be a part of the South Arts Southern Circuit Film Tour. So this is a program that is brought to the southeastern region by the National Endowment for the Arts through South Arts. And I just had an orientation meeting with them today. It's very exciting. They will bring to us a circuit along with five other theaters in the state of Georgia and many others regionally. I think a total of about 30 other theaters regionally are selected to be a part of this program. But we will have six different screenings with southern filmmakers showing their films about uniquely southern items. You may remember that we recently had the We Will Speak event with History Cherokee. As an example, that's one of the films in the current season's circuits. So it won't be one next year when we're participating, but it will be an event like that, and that was very, very successful. So I'm very excited that we are able to partner with the Fox on this. It's, it's a very good and exciting thing for us. But that leads me to one more thing that I just thought I would mention. You know, I understand this project, we are asking for a lot of resources. There is the possibility that we could apply for a grant through the Fox this summer. They open their applications mid-June, and they wouldn't make a decision until mid-October. So I have found out that they would accept all of the, all of the information and all of the quotes that we have received, with the understanding that if something does increase in price at that time, we would just be responsible for any additional. And, you know, it's not guaranteed. It is a grant application, but there is the possibility for up to $100,000 funding, just so you're aware. But I believe that's everything I have, and if you have any questions for me, I am here.
Great. Thank, thank you, Ms. Green. Appreciate the updates and the potential of the grant. Thank you for your answers to the questions and your ongoing passion for the theater and all, all the programs that we're doing there. So it's very exciting. So question, Mr. Waterman?
Yes, Ms. Green. Curious, with all of the equipment that's being upgraded, will you receive training? Who will be authorized to operate that equipment?
So they will train our city staff. One important thing that they pointed out to me after some of your questions last time, the CCS, the company that we are, are working with, they mentioned that they, with the upgrade includes added controls that we don't currently have, because nothing we currently have is digital. It's all just, anybody can walk up to it, press a button, change anything. But with the upgrade, there will be digital controls. So, you know, imagine even if, for some reason, staff had walked away and someone with a rock band was there and they thought, this is not loud enough, we need to turn it up. Well, because there are those controls in place, it is not possible for anyone who is not signed on as staff to be able to do anything that could hurt the equipment. So they couldn't blow out the speakers by doing something like that. So they will train us.
All right. So any event that takes place in the theater, the sound equipment will be monitored or operated by city staff?
Absolutely.
Mr. Johnson?
Ms. Green, you mentioned a 90-day warranty. For the record, can you, two things, can you state what that encompasses? Because when I think of spending money, I mean, we, we get a longer warranty on a refrigerator. But, but 90 days, can you specify which portion this will cover? Or can we get a longer warranty to cover this equipment?
So, yes. The 90-day warranty would cover any of the work that they did during installation. The manufacturer warranties are in place for the physical equipment itself. But along with the, along with the plan, the, the proposal, it includes that year of service. So with that year of service, they will come in and they will repair anything that is wrong. And you can also renew that annually. So they're basically on call and will fix anything that, that is of issue during that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rush?
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve the Canton Theater lighting and sound upgrade. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Green. Item E, discussion and, no, item D, excuse me, discussion and possible action for History Cherokee to defer annual installment on the note between the city and History Cherokee to purchase the East Marietta Street property. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall at the last council meeting, I brought before you a request from History Cherokee to allow them to defer a $25,000 installment on their 30-year note payment for the purchase of the old Police Department building. You had some questions during that time between these two meetings. I reached out to History Cherokee with those questions that you had. They provided a response, and I provided that to the Mayor and Council for your review and consideration. Tonight, if you're amenable to approving this, what we can do is place, place within the memorandum of understanding that we will prepare with the History Cherokee and identify those services or products that will directly benefit the city of Canton with this $25,000 with this installment. So keep that in mind if council is amenable to approving this $25,000 deferral.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Appreciate that. I know we, we've discussed this. I've had several discussions with, with council members. I mean, it's obviously at the city and everyone on this council has a vested interest in, in the success of History Cherokee and the History Center. We're, we're proud of the center, and we're proud of the facility. You know, at the same time, we also have the obligation to our citizens and residents and businesses to, to be responsible for how the money's being spent. So, you know, operational shortfalls that were identified are, you know, certainly concerning. I've discussed with several council members, you know, they wouldn't want this to become a habit or recurring request. So I think within the minimum rule of understanding, I believe we'd all like to see that this, a condition, this is a one-time deferral and not to be repeated. You mentioned the, the memo of understanding, Mr. Ingram, and I, I think just for the public, you know, every year, the funds, I believe this past year was 75,000 actual that we committed to History Cherokee from Canton Tourism, which includes the $25,000 that they, in return, pay back to the city for, for the, for the note. But I certainly think if this deferral is made, you know, as a, you know, line item in that memo of understanding, I believe we all would like to see, we've discussed, you know, how those funds would be spent. So I would like to, you know, if the council is agreeable to, to granting this deferral, to ask Canton Tourism to meet with History Cherokee. And I know the memo of understanding this year has not yet been submitted, but submit that, which include the deferral within that memo of understanding, so it is, you know, in writing and the one-time deferral. But also a list of services that, that $25,000, since it would be going to operations, you know, how specifically it would benefit Canton citizens and, and residents. I know it's mentioned in, in the reply from History Cherokee that they operate as an informal visitor center, and the restrooms are open to the public. I know we've discussed many occasions the need for public restrooms downtown and a visitor center, and, you know, perhaps if that's something that we want to include in the memo of understanding, that it is, you know, functions as a visitor center during city events or things like that, then I think, you know, we can tie direct return on, on, on that, on those funds in that deferral. I also want to take this opportunity to invite all the cities in Cherokee County to support the History Center. I believe this History Center has requested more funding from the other cities and are hoping to get a total of $10,000 in total from all the other cities combined. City of Canton, you know, is, has committed $75,000 this year. We'd certainly like to see them, issue, challenge them to, to raise their support of the History Center, which is there to support the entire county and, and our history and our preservation efforts that we're proud of in the city, but it benefits all of us. So I just want to put that on record, that we would love to see the other cities and the county increase their support. You know, the, the center has been operating, it's a wonderful facility, been operating about a year. I mean, it's, it's, you know, practically a startup, startup business organization. Again, we want to see them succeed. We want to support them, but we also want to, to make sure that we're serving our citizens and businesses and, and looking after them first and foremost. So that's my comments and my recommendation, that if we, council is willing to do the deferral, that we make that part of, as Mr. Ingram said, a formal part of the memo of understanding and say clearly that it's a one-time deferral only, and ask for, in writing, a part of that understanding, how, how those funds could be spent to, to benefit Canton residents and businesses. Questions or comments? Mr. Yon?
I'm wondering, in light of what you've said, if we should defer decision on this until we get a memo of understanding that we could vote on, a final version of?
Yeah, I guess at minimum, we just want direction to go ahead and get that done.
Yeah. I, I think that would be a very wise move, and we could ask them to expedite that. I'd rather devote, I'd rather us vote on that memo of understanding and so we're all clear on exactly what we're doing and the terms in that. But I guess tonight, just stating that we are in support of it, as, as, as long as we're in agreement with the terms of the memo of understanding, so.
Mr. Ingram, given that this is, you know, History Cherokee and not Canton, do you know the breakdown of support that the, you know, can't, or Canton, the county, other cities have actually given?
Yes, we do have some of that information. It was in the information provided. I don't have that in front of me, but the city of Canton is a significant.
Significant, more than 50%?
Yes, sir.
Of the pie, okay.
Yes. So I think then we will defer that to, as soon as, like I said, memo of understanding could be presented to us, and once that is ready, we'll take a look at it. And at this point, we all kind of agree we're, we're in support, but I think voting on very clear terms of that MOU would be the way to proceed.
City management will immediately reach out to History Cherokee and work on that memorandum, hopefully in time for the next meeting, but if not, certainly the first one in May.
Thank you. Look forward to it. Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Item E- Item E, discussion and possible action to approve a quick claim deed to the Canton Housing Authority for Ship Street abandonment right away and to accept a sewer easement agreement. Mr. Dyer?
This is the, as the Canton Housing Authority is getting closer to their loan closing, these are details that we've got to clean up. So we abandoned the Ship Street right away within the Housing Authority's property, so this deed is just conveying the title to that property to them. The form that was attached to your packet has been changed by, after some changes from Housing Authority's attorney. So the motion would be to allow, to authorize the mayor to sign a quick claim deed as approved by city attorney and city manager. On the sewer easement, because we have sewer facilities located on the property, they'll have to give us an easement back to be able to access their property and maintain those facilities. They're trying to locate all of them and make it very specific easements for those particular things in the location they're in. So they're waiting for their engineers to finish that product. That will not require the mayor to sign anything, but again, the acceptance of the sewer easement will be dependent on approval by the city attorney and city manager.
Okay. We've discussed this several times. Any questions, comments?
If there are no questions or comments, I would like to attempt to make a motion based on this information. So here we go. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the quick claim deed to the Canton Housing Authority for Ship Street abandonment right away and I think that's all.
And to accept the sewer easement.
The latter part, the sewer easement has to be included in that, or no?
Yes, because we would need to accept it. We're just accepting it in advance, again, just so that, because I don't know when they're closing is scheduled.
May I start over then? Okay.
Andy's got it.
Except a sewer easement agreement. Once reviewed and approved by the city manager and the city attorney. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Few new business items. Item A, discussion and possible action on modernization of city elevator. Ms. Penley?
Not Mr. Hooper. I am here tonight looking for a discussion and action of modernization of the city hall elevator. As we all know, the city hall elevator has been down, is currently inoperable right now. The elevator is actually, basically the parts are obsolete. Therefore, because they no longer manufacture parts to repair that elevator, we cannot find a company that is willing or can work on the elevator. So they suggest that we do a modernization on it, basically rehab it, is what we're looking to do. We reached out to a, to two different companies to receive quotes from them. The first one that we reached out to was Otis, and they came back with a quote of $135,000 with an additional $20,000 in cab interior, basically the inside of the elevator. If we wanted to update that as well, and it would be an additional $20,000. And the second one was from Genesis Elevator. It was, it came back in as $132,203 even, the same thing. They're going to go in, but that does include upgrading the interior of the elevator. That price does include that. I know that I received some questions today from Mr. Hooper that I believe came from Mr. Peppers and Mr. Ingram on warranty discussion and things like that. So I'm going to try to sum some of this up. For Otis, we currently use Otis here at city hall. That's who we've been using. We have reached back out to them to ask them about the warranty and timeframe. Unfortunately, we did not receive an answer from them, and that's been a little bit of an issue, the communication that we've had with them thus far. Genesis, they came back and explained to us that they have a, the first 12 months, once it's completed, the first 12 months is the, basically the maintenance. They will maintain it, they will, it will be under warranty, any parts, things like that, they will cover. After that, we enter into a three-year maintenance agreement, which is $185 a month, and they will come out monthly, you know, to make sure that it's up and operable and working correctly. Let's see here. We also, we did receive some references from Genesis on some of the other cities, one of them being Cherokee County, I believe the city of Coweta. We did reach out to them about that, about some references. And then also, as far as timeframe, Genesis came back and told us today, actually just got a text on it, that if the decision is made for us to do the work, say this month, it will take six months, basically. They said it would take six months, so it would be about September, beginning of October, when everything was in and arrived and they actually started the work on it. Once they start the installation on it, it takes four to five weeks for that to be completed. So we would have it, it would be operable and completed by the end of the year at, you know, maximum. And I believe that's all I have, if y'all have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Penley. I know you're enchanting there, and we appreciate the information.
Sure, no problem.
We discussed this at our retreat. Obviously, this is an emergency situation since the elevator's not functioning and it's really essential for ADA and access. So any questions for Ms. Penley? Do you believe we need to act on this tonight? Mr. Waterman?
Ms. Penley, so with the elevator down, is city hall considered to be ADA compliant?
No, it is not ADA compliant currently.
The caveat to that is, we don't have any services that we cannot provide at an entry level for an individual with a disability. So if there is a need to meet with a customer, if there is a need to provide space to meet with the public, we can all do that on ADA accessible locations. For example, if we needed to handle a situation with occupational taxes which are on the third floor, we could do that in utility billing, which is ADA compliant, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
Good question. Ms. McGrew?
How are we going to communicate to the public that this elevator is out of service and if they need accommodations, how to receive those accommodations?
Do so, we would do so through signage.
Then would they call a phone number and let someone know that they were here?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
In your opinion, so the number I heard was $132,000, the upgrade for the interior, 20?
For Otis is $135,000 and then $20,000 for the cab interior for that to be upgraded. It would be, so basically, you're looking at $155,000 total for Otis, and then for Genesis Elevator, it's $132,203. And that includes the upgrade for the inside of the elevator.
Okay, so I guess my question is, do you think that the money spent for that upgrade, is it necessary, or do we just need a functioning elevator?
Unfortunately, I cannot answer that question offhand. I do know that part of the cab interior that they're talking, that Genesis discussed with us, was all the buttons would be in braille, so therefore, it would be upgraded where it is ADA compliant. There is also a, like, basically a TV screen, like a two-way screen, so if anyone was ever trapped in the elevator or you had to have an emergency. But as far as outside of that, I do not know, but I can find out more information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. McGrew?
Ms. Penley, thank you. I've heard of Otis, I think everybody's heard of Otis, but never heard of Genesis. How were there references that you received?
From my understanding, they're really, they're good, they've, people have had good experiences with them. I actually reached out to Mr. Poole, who is over our building and, what is his title now? I'm so sorry. It is, he's over our building and facilities maintenance. That's not his title, and I apologize. Anyway, he's really the one that's over, has been over this project, has been overseeing this project, and he's been dealing a lot with Genesis and with Otis. And when I spoke to him today, he was very much on the belief of what he was telling me, that Genesis he felt more comfortable with just because of the working relationship and how they have been so responsive. They've been, you know, anytime we've called, we've had any questions, they're automatically answering the phone, they are ready and willing to help. And he's like, obviously, that's going to, he feels that that rolls over, you know, to all of their customer service and the maintenance on the elevators.
And one other question was, since we are making accommodations while this is under repair, may I assume that we are not at risk for any fines for noncompliance?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to approve the contract to Genesis for the repair and rehab of the elevator, not to exceed the amount of $132,203.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Penley. Item B, discussion of requests for proposals for pest control services issued January 15, 2024. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Back in January, the city issued an RFP for pest control services for buildings that the city owns, approximately five buildings. We have been with our current provider for about seven years, so it was about time. It was nothing really that caused this, it was just time to issue an RFP. The RFP came back and Pest Master was the lowest proposer at $4.95 a month, and we're going to recommend at the next meeting, if council is amenable to do that, to award a contract to Pest Master for pest control services.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Any questions for Mr. Ingram?
Thank you.
Item C, discussion of the municipal services agreement for animal control between the city of Canton and Cherokee County.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We currently have an agreement with Cherokee County with the Marshal's Office to provide animal control services. That agreement has lapsed, and we have been provided with an updated agreement, which basically provides the same services under the terms of the last agreement, but takes us through the end service delivery agreement, which is June 30, 2028. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. And is this something we'd be considering at the next meeting, or?
That's correct.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, sir. We'll be right on to your report then.
Just a few items on the report tonight. Later on this month, the week of April 22, we will start Georgia Cities Week. That is a celebration in the state of Georgia of all the municipalities. We take that very seriously in the city of Canton, so we try to plan a lot of activities for the public during that particular week. Ms. Lauren Johnson and her team in communications has been putting out some information, will continue to put out information, but some of the things that we have going on that week include a teen career fair that we have here in the auditorium. We also have the ribbon kicking of the new mini pitch filled out at Harmon Park that'll be on Tuesday night. We have a film festival that's going on at the theater. We start off the week with Garden in the Park, and so all of that, all of those events will be listed on our social media and will be publicized through a variety of different formats. I believe we sent out the city's monthly newsletter that included all that in there as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me tonight.
Questions for Mr. Peppers? You're off hook, sir.
Thank you very much.
I had no council introduced items, just checking. I have nothing to report this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. We will be given the status of the elevator. We will be holding executive session here in this room, so we want to thank you all for attending tonight, but ask you if you could exit and go have dinner as quickly as possible. Thank you so much.